All right. All right, we'll call this meeting of the Richfield City Council for October 28th, 2025 to order. Just a note for the audience, Mayor Sepple is unavailable tonight, so I am chairing the meeting in her absence. First, let's rise if you're able, and we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next item is approval of the agenda. Normally, I would ask one of the other council members to make that motion, but we do have a change tonight, so I am going to move it myself. I move that we approve the agenda with an addition for item 10A to add consideration of summary publication of that ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of that item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the sets of minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from both the work session and meeting of October 14th. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Next, we have open forum. So if you have something to address to the council, you can come forward and say that at that time. I don't believe we received any cards, but you are still welcome to come up and speak. If you are here for the 494 public hearing, there'll be a different opportunity for you to speak. But if anybody would like to speak now, please come forward. All right? All good? So next up, we have the proclamations and presentations, and we're going to start with the 20th Great Pumpkin Giveaway Coloring Contest, and I will ask Eric Begannick and Steve Schneberger to come forward for that. Not seeing Steve, but thank you, Eric.
Mr. Schneberger had a family emergency, so he won't be here tonight.
Hello, everyone. I'm from the Richfield Arts Commission, and we're going to present the awards for the three different age groups for the Great Pumpkin Giveaway Coloring Contest. So we had ages five and under category, ages six to eight, and ages nine through 12. And I didn't select the winners, so I don't know who they are.
All right, Steph, can you remind me, we do, I always send pictures of them, but do you have the names handy by chance?
All right. So here we have our ages five picture. It looks like Isla was our winner. Let's give Isla a round of applause.
Congratulations.
An excellent drawing. And Isla, actually, here's a gift card for you as well, to Michael's, for you to enjoy some more art in your life.
Congratulations, Isla.
All right, next up, age seven for our ages six to eight category. This will go to Anna. Is Anna here tonight? All right, let's give Anna a round of applause.
Great job, Anna.
All right, and for our final ages nine through 12 category, our Great Pumpkin Giveaway. I can't quite read the name.
Gabriella.
Thank you. Gabriella is Gabriella here today. Round of applause for Gabriella. One more big round of applause for all the coloring contest winners.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that, and congratulations to our three winners. Yeah. Our next item is actually the Arts Commission Annual Report, which I'm assuming is also Mr. Begannick, so.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and go forward with that whenever you're ready.
Thanks, everyone. Just waiting for our slides to come up. Yeah, no problem. So we had, I can talk while we wait for the slides. So we had a very big year with the Arts Commission, full of lots of volunteer activities once again, going out into the community and working on several main areas of community engagement with the arts. Of course, we have our Arts in the Community Initiative, and then we focused on an Arts in Our Schools Initiative as well. And here is the presentation to help show that off. All right, do I have control or not? No, that's okay. So here, like I mentioned, we focused on our two main themes, art in our schools and art in our community. I love that Farmer's Market Be Kind painting that someone made with our Art with Natural Materials activity. And up top, we're at a school, making some marble painting again this year at a carnival outside. Let's skip to the next slide. So art in our schools, here are some of the activities that we brought to our schools this year. At the very beginning of the year, we helped students create glow ones at the Friendship Dance at the Richfield Dual Language School, which was a lot of fun. We also hosted once again at the Community Center our high school seniors' art show, which was very successful, and we provided refreshments as well. We were at the Centennial Cougar Carnival, making marble painting, such as the one on the bottom there. And then on October 24th, just this past week, we were also at Sheridan's Family Craft Night. Sheridan was a school we hadn't collaborated with, so I think we've almost achieved our goal of working with all the Richfield schools, at least the public schools, and we hope to expand to charter schools, and we haven't worked with the middle school yet. So if anyone has any ideas for art in the middle school in the community, we would be happy to collaborate with them in our upcoming year. Art in our community, we focused on a lot of activities in collaboration with Parks and Rec. We were at the Earth Day event at Woodlake Nature Center, where we created mobiles with students and, or with children and their families, made out of natural materials. And then we also were at the State of the Community event on June 11th, making painted rocks at that event. We also visited the farmer's market again twice. We recycled some of the natural materials we didn't use for our mobiles at the farmer's market to paint beautiful art with the natural materials. And then we also had a Reading is Fun Day on August 2nd, where we created a community word mural with participants and had a reading as well. We focused also, we expanded some of our focus in the community to the Entertainment in the Park series, going to some of the concerts this summer and providing arts activities for families. We did a coloring to jazz mural on July 22nd, or June 17th, and on July 22nd, we did paper plate tambourines with the women's drum ensemble that was performing, which was a lot of fun. All right, and then we've also, there are new poems around Richfield Lake next to Lakewins. Every two years, we do work with the Mississippi Valley Poets Society to get new poems put up around Richfield Lake, so it's not the same poems constantly. It's nice to refresh and have new ones in there. So go take a walk around the lake and check out those new poems, they're pretty fantastic. And we also were helping volunteer at that event this summer, when the authors did their readings of the new poems. We were at Penn Fest, we expanded our community word mural activity that we started at the farmer's market, and people were putting really positive statements about Richfield on it. So we're actually gonna, we have it on foam board, and we're gonna continue to add to that word mural next year at more public events until the thing is completely full, and hopefully we'll find a place such as City Hall or in the Community Center to display the word mural, so that the whole community can see it once it's done. And then we were, as, you know, we just featured with the, with the trophies, we were at the Great Pumpkin Giveaway just a couple of weeks ago, helping out with the coloring contest. We also have our ongoing activities, such as Painting the Pride Roundabout over on Lyndale. We did it twice this year, instead of just once, focusing on doing one round of painting of two colors in the spring, and then painting two more colors in the fall, just so that we can keep it bright and vibrant year-round, and we can keep that maintenance going forward. We also have our little free library outside the hockey arena, over by the band shell, kind of between the two, and we've continuously filled that. We're currently going to be doing a book drive, so if you have books to give from the community, you can visit the Community Center or the hockey arena, and we have boxes there that you can bring your books to, so we can put them in our little free library. It's a pretty popular library year-round because of all the activities going on there. We also had our, so a big thing that we accomplished this year that we've been wanting to do for a while is updating our Art Walk brochure. And not only did we update it, we also translated it into Spanish with help from the city. So there is an English and a Spanish version of our new Art Walk brochure that's available at our events, and we are looking, as the city's new website goes up, to try and get that Art Walk brochure in a visual format up on the new website. So we're excited about that this upcoming year as well. We always work on our public art displays in the public buildings, including the Community Center and City Hall, and have those ongoing exhibits. And we did also review our bylaws and found that we don't want to make any changes to our bylaws right now. We were pretty compliant with the bylaws, and they seem to fit exactly what we do on our commission, so, but we did refresh that and make sure we were doing our due diligence. And then next year, we are doing another photo contest to hopefully get some more electrical box wraps done in the community, and we're expanding the photo contest to some categories, I think, that are going to be a lot of fun, so stay tuned and be sure to read the Parks, the Parks brochure when that comes out, and then, yeah, the online version of the brochure. And with that, I'd just like to say thank you and give a shout out to the Arts Commission this, this year. It's been a really great group of volunteers, working hard on behalf of the city and behalf of arts in the city, and I just want to say thank you to all of them, and thank you to our liaisons, BJ Skug, who is on the Community Services Commission, and Sharon Christensen, who is our City Council Liaison, and Jill Murphy, our staff liaison, who works tirelessly for us on our behalf. So shout out to all of them, and thank you all so much for listening.
Thank you. If you just want to stay up in case there's any questions or comments, do council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Sure, I will make a comment, since I'm the liaison for the group or whatever. I've been, this is my second year doing the, I'm third, I'm not quite sure, of being the liaison for this group, and it is a unbelievably fantastic, creative, special group of people that are always there for the community, they're there for all the kids at the school, and not just the kids, but for the adults as well, you know, to promote art in this, in this community that we have, that we call Richfield, so, yeah.
Thanks, Sharon.
All right, anybody else? Okay. I will just say briefly, I always appreciate seeing the activities you do, that art is, is the activity of making it as much as it is what you create, so it's just fun to see that every year. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
And then next up, we have the Human Rights Commission. Do we have the Chair of the Human Rights Commission with us tonight? All right.
So I was told we did not need to put the presentation together, so apologies, but I'll be, I'll be reading from my notes app. But thank you all for, for hosting us tonight, giving us the opportunity to, to speak to the great work that the, the Human Rights Commission is doing. 2025 is my fifth year on the HRC, second as the Chair, and this year stands alone as the most challenging year to date working in this space. While I'm proud of the work that we have done, and believe that this current group is among the strongest for my, my tenure on the HRC, keeping up with the aggressive anti-human rights actions and rhetoric coming from our federal government has at times seemed to be an impossible task. Regardless, we persisted in the pursuit of the greatest possible impact that we could make in our community. Throughout this changing landscape, we have aligned ourselves more closely with affected community groups, developing the understanding of where we have, where we can more aggressively advocate and where we may need to exercise discretion. We have continued our successful series of free legal aid clinics, providing critical and potentially life-altering guidance to people who may otherwise be navigating difficult legal circumstances entirely on their own. The next one of these is, is Friday, November 14th, at the Community Center from 12:30 to 5:00, so if you're not, not familiar with those, or recommend that you, you drop by. We once again coordinated the Jean and Mary Jacobson Award this year, granting to Tanika Smith, who is persistent in her support of those in need in our community and surrounding areas. In addition, we have spent a lot of time planning how we can make future nominations more far-reaching, to ensure that we recognize and put a spotlight on the best of Richfield each and every year. We continue to prepare proclamations for presentation at council meetings throughout the year, with an added emphasis on identifying appropriate community members to receive the proclamations wherever possible. This remains a fantastic educational opportunity for, for commissioners and, and the city alike. In a collaborative effort, we have begun developing literature to support the HRC and the city at tabling events and just, you know, generating documents for the city to lean on as, as permanent resources for the residents. These may be things that, that touch on a variety of different human rights issues, like legal aid being an example of that, or, you know, housing, just trying to compile a list of, of really critical resources that we'd like to, to share with the city. So work in progress there. Finally, we collaborated with the city on this year's Juneteenth pop-up, a pop-up event, as well as hosting a booth at Penn Fest. The supportive feedback we receive at events like this is a firm reminder that Richfield is a healthy, empathetic, and strong community. In addition to this ongoing work, there are many other ideas we've worked on that, that haven't been able to fully come to fruition. For example, a couple of attempts at an essay contest, an immigration citizenship event, Richfield Pride celebration, celebration, and more that we plan to revisit in the years ahead. I mention these ideas that didn't quite launch to highlight that this is a dedicated and passionate group of commissioners who are always searching for ways to advance, advocate for, or educate on human rights in the city of Richfield. To that end, one ask that I would make of city leadership, both elected and, and city staff, is to form, be deliberate about forming a, a closer embrace with the various commissions, but, you know, from my perspective, specifically the HRC, and working together to achieve our shared goals. Speaking from experience, from the HRC in specific, as ideas have been brought forward through the years, I've heard that the city can't do that more often than I've had, than we've had the city bring opportunities to us in which we could, you know, lend our, our ideas and our energy to contribute. That's something I think that there's, there's opportunity for us to work more closely together towards those shared goals. There's no shortage of ideas within the HRC, however, the general open-endedness of the subject of human rights, as well as, you know, kind of the, the tide that's, that's currently working against human rights, it's difficult to know where the best places to put our energy are. And I think that a closer alignment with, with the city's goals will help us to, you know, kind of hone in on, on where we can make the greatest impact locally. As an example of that, I feel that the, the HRC may be able to contribute directly to the equity and inclusion work in the city that may not have the current level of financial backing beyond, you know, the one staffed position that, where it could make its greatest possible impact. With that said, I want to thank you once more for the opportunity to present tonight and for your partnership year over year. I'd also like to thank Walter, Brittany, and our representatives from the Richfield Police Department, who are crucial backers of our work. I'm hopeful that in the, the coming years, we can form an even closer alliance to combat the tide coming from the federal level and keep the city of Richfield a safe and inclusive place for all. Any comments or questions?
Thank you for your report, yeah. Do we have any comments from the council? Yeah, Councilmember Burke?
First, just want to start off, I'm thanking you for your leadership for the Human Rights Commission, as you said, two years in a row, and please extend to the members of the Commission our thanks and appreciation for the time that they put in to reminding city councils, city staff, and residents of the importance of human rights for all of us, and those constant reminders that may not be coming from other parts of, other levels of government. It's important that we do it locally and keep doing it locally, and thank you for that.
Any other comments? I will just add one thing in response to your request to sort of have ideas break out of just the committee and affect the city larger. That is always a process, that there's not a perfect solution to that, but I will say one thing, we've changed in our agenda recently, is to invite council members to do reports from the commissions that they liaise to. So I think if you have an ask that you want the council to be aware of, I would strongly encourage you to work with, with your representative, with Councilmember Burke, saying, hey, mention this in your liaison report, make sure the whole city council knows about that. Just, that doesn't mean we can immediately act on something, but it at least allows it to get, get it on everybody's radar. And that applies to any commission, Transportation Commission is one that I'm liaison to. But consider trying to bring things forward that way, to make us aware of, of areas where you might be frustrated or limited.
Sounds great, appreciate that.
All right, anything else before we move on? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Transportation Commission's presentation, and we've got Lou Dersak here.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lou Dersak, I'm the Chair of the Transportation Commission. The Transportation Commission has met eight times this year to continue our work to improve the transportation network in Richfield. The first half of this year was focused on feedback about proposed transit changes throughout the city, providing feedback to Metro Transit, Transit on a proposed stop consolidation project on Nicollet Avenue, their Network Now study, and their ongoing bus rapid transit identification study to found routes for the J, K, and L lines. The Commission continues to encourage staff from Metro Transit and other transit agencies to continue to invest in Richfield and improve both intra-city and inter-city transit service. Beginning in June, the Commission began work on collaborating with Hennepin County on the upcoming Penn Avenue reconstruction project. The project may not be started until 2028, but it'll take years of planning to find a design that satisfies the diverse needs of the residents and the businesses of the city. The Commission hosted the first open house for this project in late September at St. Richards Church at 76th and Penn, and looks forward to hosting a second in mid-November on the other side of the project area, area at Sheridan Hills Elementary School. The Commission has also been providing staff with input and direction about upcoming sidewalk construction projects to fill gaps identified in the pedestrian master plan on 64th Street and 73rd Street. Safe Routes to School Project at Sheridan Hills Elementary School is also in the early stages of design development. The Commission expects to provide a recommendation on these projects by the end of 2025. At other meetings, the Commission has received outside presentations from commuter services about their programs, and from Southwest Transit about the new 686 route, which stops in Richfield on its path between Eden Prairie and the airport. In September, the Commission took advantage of the beautiful fall weather and took a bike tour of several projects in the city, including the Safe Routes to School projects at Centennial and STEM RDLs, the new pedestrian bridge over 494 at Chicago Avenue, and through the sites of the 2026 sidewalk projects. In 2026, the Commission anticipates continuing discussions about the Penn Avenue project, beginning engagement work on the reconstruction of 69th Street west of Penn, and starting discussions about a new traffic calming policy for the city. As the Chair, on behalf of the other board members, I'd like to thank the traffic staff for keeping us prepared, informed, and providing us an incredible amount of detail, so when we make decisions, we really feel informed about all the options. So I want to thank them for that.
All right, thank you, Lou. I am liaison to Transportation, and I'll just say, I've been at almost every meeting this past year. I always appreciate the work of the Commission, people come prepared, and people come curious, which is something that's fun. I think not everybody gets around the city in the same way. When we did the bike ride, I heard from a few people being like, yeah, like if I bike, I, I put it on my car and I go to a trail. So people being open to explore the city in other ways, and always considering the perspective of other people who might use the bus if they don't use the bus, or, or drive more than they do. So I really appreciate that from the whole group. I also really appreciate your engagement with the public at those open houses, it makes a big difference, and it's great to see so many of the commissioners there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah. Councilmember Burke?
One quick comment, you mentioned for 2026 that your Commission will be focusing and working on traffic calming. I'm definitely looking forward to seeing recommendations coming out of that. It's a, it's a contentious issue, and so I wish you all the luck with that, so, and I'm looking forward to whatever your recommendations have. Thank you.
Thank you. The one thing that I've been impressed at with working on the Commission for four or five years now is everyone works hard to hear as many different voices as possible. All the different open houses, all the different outreach, we really do try to make sure that everyone has a voice, and we listen to everyone's voices, so we'll continue to do that.
All right, anything else? All right, well, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda tonight will be the Consent Calendar, and that will be read by City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. On tonight's consent calendar, oh, I'm sorry, the preamble, Consent Calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's Consent Calendar is Item A, Approved Dispersments and Claims; Item B, the 2026 Benefit Contributions; Item C, Consider a Correction to the Legal Descriptions for Resolution Number 11-48 from 2018 for RF 64; and Item D, Second Reading of a Transitory Ordinance Providing Funding for Certain Capital Improvements from the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund. And I submit these items for your consideration on tonight's Consent Calendar.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the Consent Calendar? Okay, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? All right, the Consent Calendar is passed. The next item will go to Councilmember Burke regarding 494. I'll ask that you read the executive summary, and I believe we'll have a presentation from MND staff prior to actually conducting the public hearing.
Thank you. So the item for consideration is the I-494 Vision Project II. The Minnesota Department of Transportation has requested municipal consent from the city of Richfield for a highway project on I-494. State statute requires cities who have been asked for municipal consent to hold a public hearing within 60 days of the request. The city must then vote on approval or disapproval of the project's layout within 90 days of the public hearing. Project II of the I-494 Corridor Vision would construct an easy pass lane on I-494 between I-35W and 24th Avenue, reconstruct pavement on I-35W between American Boulevard and 75th Street, reconstruct the railroad bridge at Pleasant Avenue, reconstruct 78th Street east of 12th Avenue, reconstruct the I-494 Highway 77 interchange, and perform bridge deck rehabilitation on the Lyndale Avenue Bridge over I-494. Other work in the project's scope outside of Richfield includes easy pass, easy pass extension on I-494 between West Bush Lake Road and Highway 100, and reconstruction of the I-35W 82nd Street interchange. And as was already mentioned, it's supposed to be a presentation, and so, please identify yourself and tell us what you're presenting.
I'm with MND, Minnesota Department of Transportation. A couple of roles I play there at the, at the district, I'm an area engineer, and in that role, I do represent some of the corridors that are traversing the city of Richfield. I've also been playing a role as a project manager for the I-494 corridor. So I do appreciate coming and getting the chance to present to, to the council, to, to the public at large. Councilmember Burke, you did a very good intro to my presentation, you're almost finishing it, so you did majority of my work, but yes, to, to the general public, trying to, as part of the agenda, give reason why, why we are here tonight, for the municipal consent, the statutes that point out why we need to come for a public hearing, remind the, the public on the phase that we are seeking municipal consent on. As part of that process, we are also required to present what the anticipated local cost share is on, on the project that we are seeking municipal consent of, of. And then, I'm sure many are interested on what the construction impacts will be, so my last couple of slides will, will share on what are proposed staging and couple of slides will share on what are proposed staging and management of traffic will be for the second phase. So as Councilmember introduced my presentation, so the reason why MND has to request for municipal consent, it is a state statute that any MND project that alters access through a community on state highway, a project that increases or reduces traffic, reduces capacity on a MND roadway, or a project that is acquiring permanent right-of-way, it is by statute that MND has to come and request for municipal consent. And as part of that process, we do hold a public hearing, which is, for the city of Richfield, is tonight. Now, what applies for the city of Richfield is that we are, as part of the second phase, are going to be increasing capacity on 494 with the addition of easy-pass lanes. So a reminder, a quick reminder, this corridor, what we are determining a corridor vision determined back in 2022, so this work really started in earnest back in 2018, but working with our local partners along the corridor, city of Richfield, city of Bloomington, city of Edina, Hennepin County, we came up with and approved a corridor vision which was to add easy-pass lanes from Highway 169 to the west, all the way through the airport, so just, I would say, east of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. Those are the physical limits of the easy-pass lanes. As part of this corridor vision, we are also reconfiguring or reconstructing the 35W 494 interchange. And the last piece of that corridor vision was to realign or realter access of Highway 494 by consolidating access to Portland Avenue and eliminating highway access from both Nicolet Avenue and Twelfth Avenue. So for the forks that are traversing 494, what they are seeing for construction out there to date is mainly work between East Bush Lake Road and 35W. That was termed Project One. Majority of that work is about done. I would say for the pavement reconstruction that is being done, is about 95% done by this time. Portland Avenue Bridge is continuing to be worked on. Once that is completed, then access of Nicolet and Twelfth will be taken out, and construction for the Nicolet Avenue and Twelfth Avenue bridges will begin in 2026. So but what this slide shows is the scope for the upcoming phase, or the last project or the last phase of the corridor vision. And that entails adding easy-pass lanes from East Bush Lake Road to West Bush Lake Road on the west side of the corridor, reconstructing pavement between just south of Eighty-Second Street on 35W and on Seventy-S sixth Street, reconstructing pavement from Lindale Avenue all the way through to Twenty-Fourth Avenue on the east side of 35W, replacing the railroad bridge between Nicolet and Lindale, and reconstructing the Highway 77 bridges over 494. So also as part of that project's scope, mostly in the cities of Bloomington, but there is some multimodal improvements in the city of Richfield east of 35W. So the anticipated cost share for the city of Richfield is about 9,000, and that is to cover for any street lighting that, working with the city staff, they have identified they might want to include as part of the project. Last couple of slides, so yes, construction staging. We are still anticipating a four-year construction project similar to Project One. For people that are using 494, you would agree that the current accommodation of general-purpose lanes, or say, general lanes, access lanes on 494 is three in each direction. The proposed staging is to try and keep the same number of lanes open during construction. Of course, they're going to be, the width might be reduced, we may have what we term shoot lanes, we may have barriers, I would say, concrete barriers as we are traversing during construction. But generally, we're trying to keep three lanes in each direction during construction also on the second phase, similar to what is out there in the first phase. A four-year construction project, as I mentioned, the first year in 2027 would focus mainly on utility relocations and any temporary widening that might be needed to accommodate the three lanes. And then 2028 through 2030, that is when we are anticipating the major mainline impact. So concurrent construction on both 35W and 494. So we know that there will definitely, because of the restrictions in the number of lanes on Main Line 494, that traffic is going to be diverting to the local system. So as the similar effort that was done in Phase One, we will be monitoring some of the local routes in the city of Richfield, city of Edina, city of Bloomington. And the idea in there is to make the contractor more reactive, yes. Proactive, we will be taking baseline measurements, but also reacting to where we are seeing the major local impacts being, and giving chance to the contractor to go and remedy, to remedy some of those traffic impacts. So when I mention remedies, it could be, for example, improving signal timing on some of these corridors that the local network might be impacting, that might be experiencing the backups. We might add temporary signals for intersections that may not have those signals. We might lengthen the turn lanes that are out there. So what, all those strategies, we are timing them as items in a toolbox that our contractor could deploy to help address any of the local traffic impacts that may, that will, we know that will be caused by work on Main Line 494. With that, I stand for, any questions?
Do we have any questions from the council for Mr. Lataya? Okay. All right. Thank you for your presentation.
So to staff, is there, is there any additional information that staff would like to?
No.
Okay. So now, open it up for a public hearing, for a public comment. Any resident wishing to participate in the public hearing, please proceed to the podium one at a time. Provide your name and address prior to, I'm sorry, just name, right, not address, or...
We changed that to make it the name and then the city that you live in.
Thank you for reminding me. Provide your name and the city of residence prior to your comment. Council will hear your comment. If you would like staff to follow up, please include your name and phone number or email on the sign-in document located at the podium. To ensure everyone has time to speak, each comment will be limited to three minutes in length. As a reminder to residents, the public hearing is a time for council to listen but not respond. If questions are asked, they may be addressed as part of the council discussion on the issue, or staff will follow up after the meeting. So the public hearing for the I-494 Vision Project Two, Usual Consent Public Hearing, is now open.
So if anybody would like to speak, please come forward now. All right, seen now a motion to close the public hearing and be in order?
So I would move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second, councilmembers? Do we have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, that motion carries.
So I move to approve the...
So actually, I think we're just doing the public hearing tonight.
Oh, my apologies.
So, and we will consider that at a future meeting. So thank you. All right, so our next item goes to Councilmember Christianson regarding the lodging tax.
Okay, this is the item for consideration was be, consider second reading of an ordinance imposing a tax on lodging and repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 14 of the Richfield Code of Ordinances. The proposed ordinance repeals and replaces Chapter 14 of the Richfield City Code related to the lodging tax. The purpose of this action is to align the city's ordinance with the current state law and authorize the Minnesota Department of Revenue to administer and collect the city's local lodging tax on the city's behalf beginning January 1, 2026. Under Minnesota Statutes, Section 469.190, the city is authorized to impose a tax of up to 3%. The proposed ordinance maintains the existing 3% rate and updates definitions and administrative provisions to align with state sales and use tax laws. Transferring collection authority to the state will streamline administration, enhance compliance, and reduce the administrative burden on both local lodging operators and city staff. This ordinance complements the city council's recent adoption of the Short-Term Rental Licensing Ordinance on September 23, 2025, which requires all short-term rental operators, both owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, to obtain a city license. Together, these actions establish a clear regulatory and taxation framework for all lodging activities in Richfield. Current short-term rental owners will be notified of the new licensing process and the transition to state-administered lodging tax collection. Lodging tax revenues will continue to support tourism and marketing initiatives through the city's designated tourism bureau, the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board, or RISIT-Richfield, in accordance with state statute. The first reading of this ordinance was approved by the city council on October 14. So the recommended action was by motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance imposing a tax on lodging and repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 14 of the Richfield Code of Ordinances. Does the staff have anything to add?
Councilmember, are you making the motion now? Are you making, is that, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Just let's ask for a second before we go to staff. Is there a second for that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So let's continue to staff.
Nothing to add. We're available for questions. And just a reminder that the agenda was amended to have a second motion for summary publication.
Yep. So after we complete this motion, I'll ask you to make the summary publication. Any discussion of the main motion about approving the second reading? Well, I would just say, I'm excited about the Department of Revenue collecting that. I know one of our frustrations with Airbnb-type things was them not paying the tax and making this simpler to comply and making, following the law the default is a good thing. So thank you for that work. All right, all in favor of approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. So now, Councilmember Christianson, if you'd like to make a motion to approve summary publication of that ordinance.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the summary publication of this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion of the summary publication? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, and next up, I believe we are back to Councilmember Burke for the tax bond.
So the item for consideration is to consider a resolution providing for the sale of $6,160,000 General Obligation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2025A. The Series 2025A bonds will finance the improvements to the Woodlake Nature Center building project and the Veterans Park Complex project. In the general election of November 5, 2024, Richfield voters approved the issuance of a local sales tax to fund three parks and recreation capital improvement projects, a new building at Woodlake Nature Center, improvements to the facilities of Veterans Park Complex, and a new Richfield Community Center building. The first issuance of General Obligation Bonds in the amount of $10 million took place in December 2024. The December 2024 General Obligation Bonds were intended to only be used for the Woodlake Nature Center building project. The General Obligation Bonds, to be sold in November 2025, will contribute an additional $1 million in funding towards the Woodlake Nature Center building project, and $5 million in funding towards the Veterans Park Complex project. The remaining $160,000 is related to financial costs of issuing the bonds. Staff have anything to add to that?
We're available for questions.
So the motion is to approve the attached resolution providing for the sale of $6,160,000 General Obligation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2025A.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have Councilmember Coleman Woods to discuss the pool contracts.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Pro-
Oh, it does seem we, sorry, I think we ordered, or I misplaced these. It looks like, actually, sorry, we should go youth commissioners first?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I wrote down an agenda earlier. Councilmember Christianson, and then we'll get back to the pool topic.
Okay. This is the item for consideration, to consider appointment of youth commissioners to city advisory boards and commissions. City Advisory Commission terms for youth members are for one year, and terms expire on August 31, 2026. The city manager's office offers an ongoing recruitment window for vacant youth commissioner seats, and includes information on the city's website, Facebook page, and communication with the local high schools. Applications received were forwarded to the council for review. The recommended action would be to, by motion, approve the appointment of the following youth commissioners: Mohammed Noor to the Sustainability Commission, and Jawan Nunnans to the Human Rights Commission.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion in the motion? Yeah, Councilmember Burke?
Just a quick comment, always thanking anyone who steps up to be on commissions and encourage people to do so. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you for your patience, Councilmember Coleman Woods. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Proterm. I don't know if that's proper terminology, actually. This is, yes, out of order, so I clicked around. Sorry, one second.
Yeah, keep zooming out on me, too.
All right, so the item before us, 12B. I lost 11B. There's 11A.
Sorry, you gotta move to 12B. I wrote this down in the first draft of the agenda, and then things got changed around a little bit on me.
So 11A is after...
Councilmember Coleman Woods, would you like me to read it, and you can make the motion?
I'd be happy to do likewise.
Yeah, Councilmember Burke, if you want to go ahead and read the executive summary, and then we'll still, we'll still have Councilmember Coleman Woods make the motion.
So again, the item for consideration is to consider approval of agreements with the contractors listed within for the renovation of the Richfield Pool, a sub-project of the Veterans Park Improvement Project totaling $2,244,724.40. Bids were solicited for the Richfield Pool renovation, a sub-project of the Veterans Park Improvement Project, and competitive bids were opened on September 25, 2025. Bids were received for each specific specialized area of work for the project, and the lowest responsible bids were chosen. In total, the project will involve 17 agreements for a total project cost of $3,301,789. Only these six agreements exceed $175,000 and require council approval. The agreements are Aqua Logic Inc. to replaster main pool liner at $798,000, Fisher Brothers LLC to restore water slide and install a pool zip line for $304,450, Weber Recreational Designs Inc. to install pool play structure at $297,387.40, Davis Mechanical Systems Mechanical Heating and Duct Work at $275,000, Action Fence Inc. a pool perimeter fence of $226,998, and Lowfler Construction for the Veterans Park Project Work Management and Administration for $342,889. The total amount of contracts for consideration is $2244,724.40. Staff, anything to add?
Did you want to make the motion and second it before we...
Yeah, Councilmember Coleman Woods, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I'd make the motion to approve the contracts for the pool.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Otherwise, we also have staff. I did ask the staff, just because it's a little hard to follow, what's what, if you can sort of explain what exactly we're doing with the pool project. with the pool project, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I can do kind of a, Councilman, I can do a kind of a brief scope work of it. So it gives, that's a very long document, obviously, so we can narrow it down. Yes, this will involve removing the existing green fence that was installed in 2003. It's aging. We can't even find replacement. They don't, ironically, they don't make green fences anymore. And part of it, it's already falling down, so that's a big part of the fence part. We're also expanding the footprint. There's some land available that we don't utilize towards the Legion lot, so we're going to push out the fence and have, create more green space for people to get under shade, to put towels down, to dry out, and to organize their parties. So that's part of that. And then we're also kind of reconfiguring the concession area to make it more inviting and open for families to have their lunch or dinner there. Part of the project also is restoring both of the slides with sandblasting and repainting. This will include a fun paint scheme to make it more inviting for the families as well. It will involve restoring the bridge, sandblasting and repainting that. We, the bids came in lower than expected, so we're able to fit that in to the project as well. Replacing the diving boards, adding one new one, and then adding climbing wall and aqua zip line. Aqua zip line is a mechanism that'll go out about 20 feet and then drop you and then come back. And that'll be on the west side of the deep end, so we'll be putting that in. Part of the project also has new plaster for the big pool and replastering the little pool. Originally, the big pool, the Olympic pool, is just concrete. It doesn't have a plaster over it. It's just been painted year after year, year after year, so many layers of paint. So we'll be sandblasting that and then putting on a new diamond coat color covering over that that'll be very water resistant and hold the water body in. Also, and part of that is doing some gutter work. The gutters is the part on the inside of the pool. So we'll be doing a spray painting, watertight sealing inside the gutter, reconfiguring the gutter, because we have some heaving that's gone on, so it flows better as well. With the bids coming in a little bit lower as well, we were able to replace the zero-deep play feature. So that's part of that contract, so you'll have an all-new play feature and some added amenity play features as well, because when we originally did the 2003 remodel, they put in extra pumps and piping for additional features to be added. So we'll do that a part of this project, which is great, because our play feature right now, we cannot find replacement parts for it, and it's all, it's very rusted and deteriorated at this point. Part of this project, too, will be getting our concession stand up to code, ceiling tile, epoxy flooring and backsplash, LED lighting for the whole pool building. Currently, all of it is fluorescents inside. And then air conditioning for the concession stand and for our staff rooms. The AC currently is not sufficient, and it's very warm in the concession stand and in our staff room. So that'll keep our lifecarts cool, which is important on those hot summer days, and our concession workers as well. Also, part of the project will be expansion joints in the deck. Some of them are original from, some of the concrete is original 1961 concrete, and some of those joints need to be replaced. New partitions for the bathrooms, and then all-new paint inside the building, in the bathrooms and areas you walk in, and all-new epoxy flooring. So that's a brief scope of all the contracts that were a part of the project.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Were you, oh, okay. I was curious, the fence, is that the, like, opaque fence that we were shown in the work session? Or is it a different style of fence around the perimeter of the pool?
Similar to the green fence, it's black vinyl coated chain link that...
Okay. Okay, we were shown like a, like, high-security looking, like, opaque thing as well, but that's not what's happening?
Yeah, we looked at a few different options and felt like this was a good price point and get to what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Councilmember Burke?
Just want to thank you for the good news. I'm not using the zip line, but I'm sure that there are people in this room who are very happy about that and looking forward to the completion of the project. And it, and the air conditioning sounds great for staff. That's definitely important. So thank you for the good news. You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you so much, and we're excited to see this moving forward.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right. Next up, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Proterm. I do want to thank Facilities Manager, Chris Webe. He's been overseeing this project. It's got a lot going on, as you can tell, lots of contracts. Also, Attorney Deaton, who's been helping us get these contracts done. So it's exciting to see it all take shape and to hear about it. Last open forum, we had Lataya Peterson, a Richfield resident. She discussed a situation where she witnessed juvenile with several officers that had responded to the situation. Chief Enthorn was able to speak with Ms. Peterson in the foyer, actually during the council meeting. He offered to help her to file a formal complaint, and she declined. But she did request to go on a ride-along with the police department, and that was being scheduled. In fact, it may have happened already. I'm not sure. I didn't follow up. We also had five speakers during the public hearing on certification of unpaid bills. Staff have followed up with all of those speakers, and that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have hats off to hometown hits, and I will just go down the line, starting with Councilmember Coleman Woods. Okay, Councilmember Christiansen, do you have anything?
Yes, this weekend, November 1st and 2nd, is the annual, Richfield's annual Fall Boutique, happening at the Community Center at 70th and Nicolet. And both days, Saturday and Sunday, it will be two floors worth of vendors and everything combined, with a drawing also for a handmade quilt. And the hours for that would be 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And just as a reminder, that we need to change our clocks back an hour, Saturday into Sunday. So keep that in mind when we're going there, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Nothing today, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to add a thank you to those who participated in the public activity of the protests, I guess, two weeks ago, as of this Saturday. I attended it along with several thousand Richfielders. So it was great to see people showing up to share their opinions, acting really respectfully. It seemed to be well-received by the motorists who saw us and overall went really well. It was great to see so many people engaged. All right, with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved?
Is there a second? All right, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.